We're all set. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. The first order of business is the pledge. So if you want to stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
Oh, which is Stan.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Mark. That's a nice touch to put the.
Really great.
Now, now I've got to figure out how to stop it. Hey.
The first item of business tonight of the approval of the minutes for the meeting that was held on November 16th, 2020. Are there any changes, additions, deletions that anyone has? If not, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Don't move.
Okay, Mark. Seconded. Who seconded it? This is just for the secretary.
Tali.
Okay. All in favor accepting the minutes as written? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any notes? Motion is captured unanimously. I don't think we have any public audience. Certainly no one signed up for it. So I'll go next to communications. And I just want to say to Greg and Amber, you know, I've gotten so many positive comments that we've gone back with Books to Your Door. The patrons that use that service are just so happy to have it back. And Amber, thank you. I know the Simsbury Women's Club have been doing most of the driving and it's been so helpful and well appreciated by the community.
Well, you're welcome. I know our members are really excited to be doing this. It was one of the most popular volunteer opportunities that we had for the community because it's manageable and a lot of people have interest in it. And so we're happy we can help.
Good. That's great. Thank you. Lisa, do you have any other communications?
Only the article that I shared with you this afternoon and that Mark shared with you, the video of the the one that Stephanie was in talking about the library website and all of the databases and how to access digital content that she did for the schools.
Does anyone else have any communications?
Yes, Mary Ann, I have something.
Yes.
I received an acknowledgement of the sympathy card that we sent to the husband of Mary Ann Flynn, the Simsbury Library member who passed away recently. Her husband Jim sent us a very nice note.
Thank you. Anyone else have any communications? Okay, Greg, do you want to give us a friends report?
Sure. We did get the new issue of The Doorway out and getting a lot of positive response. We're trying to also renew people's participation. We were able, as Mary Ann said already, to, in lieu of having a luncheon with the library staff, we did get some goodies out to those folks and also to the angel investors. And as far as the books to your door, we're really happy to do that. But I'd have to say thank you to Lisa and her team to help us get that done because without them, we wouldn't have been able to get it going again. So it's really a team effort all around. Yes, people are glad, you know, nobody's getting out these days. So yeah, those people are really glad to have whatever we can do. And so yeah, glad we're all a part of that. So that's kind of it.
Thank you. Okay, as far as a couple of things.
May I, can I ask Greg a question?
Sure.
I was wondering, how is membership going at this time? Do you know what percentage of members have renewed?
Actually, Tali, I don't have that number. Good question, but I do not have that number. I'm sorry.
No, I was just curious because it's, you know, hitting into January and, you know, usually there's a second wave. We kind of try to attack at that point.
Well, that's why we wanted to get the next issue of The Doorway out, you know, before the holidays and as people start thinking about their donations of whatever. Next time, hopefully I'll have a good answer for you. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And then have you guys talked about any more fundraising efforts? Because obviously the book sale didn't happen and that's a huge financial piece.
Yes, I'm right now, I'm trying to get a new publicity person because the.
Oh, I thought you had somebody.
I have a couple of people right now who are sort of interested, but sort of is not, not there, you know. But we're working on it and hopefully that will happen in January. So we're moving forward on that, I guess, is I don't have a conclusive answer for you who that is. But yes, we need another person to do that. Unfortunately, the person who was doing that before has some health issues. And it's really a shame because she's a nice lady, but.
Yeah, because she just started this year.
Well, she had to back out for all the, you know, those reasons. So without getting in more into it, that's.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay. They need publicity and then, okay. Cool. No, I know it's a, it's a lot of work. So thank you for your work, Greg.
For those who don't realize, Polly was the president of the Friends for many years.
Yes.
So she has two hats. At the last meeting, I encouraged all of you to dial in or to view the Connecticut Library Board Association webcast. Their big one, it was on the future shared. I must admit, I was very disappointed in it and I don't think it brought anything to the table that would really help us in looking ahead as far as our library's next five-year plan. I think it was very, ideas more sci-fi than concrete, which I was hoping it would be. With that being said, I think when we did the plan before, and Lisa, I think agrees with me, we came up with a very good model of how to approach it. And I think we tend to think that that would probably be the best model. Basically, we're focusing on our patrons, the residents of Simsbury, to describe and to tell us what they envision Simsbury being and what their goal would be. And then looking to see how the library can help Simsbury meet that vision versus just looking at the library as far as what can we do. We wanted to put it in a bigger view and to address, as I said, to help we make the expectations of our patrons. But that requires a lot of work as far as getting information. So where we are with, I think we could probably come up with our questionnaire and get it out. But I think until we get a lot more vaccinations, it'll be hard to get the input back. So Lisa and I were thinking of probably postponing the start of it till, say, March or April. So does anyone have any questions? It's really, you know, as I said, trying to be effective. But we could send out questionnaires, but it will be getting the information back.
Is there anything in our bylaws that dictates that by when we? Okay, I see one person shaking their head. Okay. As long as, you know.
And I think.
Obviously, I think we have to execute.
Right. And I think because we did, we did it and used this method before, it will be, we spent a lot of time trying to figure the method out and how to go about it. So I think we'll, we won't need to redo that time, that portion of it. So we'll keep you more in touch, but we just want to make sure that hopefully the community is in a better position to participate. And certainly all of you being able to participate will be critical because that's what we'll be using as a guide for the next five years.
Mary Ann, I think it's a good idea, actually, if we take a month or so to really fine tune the questions that we want answered through a survey or whatever method we're going to use to elicit them. I think last time, you know, there were some things on the survey I think we could have done a little bit more narrow focus so we'd get the kind of information we were looking for. And then also, how's that going to dovetail with down the road when we can get people together to discuss it? And we, you know, talk about like focus groups or, I mean, how do we want to do beyond the surveys? And I think we can use the month, the extra month or so to plan that out and lay out the schedule.
Yep.
And do you have a, where is the copy of that survey? Because it would help me to look at it because it's been a long time.
We. I'm sure I must have it somewhere. I can send it out.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm just, I'd be curious to looking through it and, I don't know. It takes me a while to digest things and process things. So, you know, if I have a chance to read it and then let it sit and simmer and as we continue our discussion, for me, it'd be useful to have, you know.
It was less of a survey and more of talking points to facilitate focus groups. We did do a survey too, but I think we gathered most of our pertinent information through actual focus groups and one-on-one interviews with stakeholders.
Yeah, it would be, it would be helpful to see those questions, Lisa. I went through my records and I lost a lot of stuff when my computer died. So I'd love to see those interview questions again. I know I actually have pictures of some of the discussion boards that we had, that we wrote on.
Yep.
But I think we can do a really good job with just being very careful about who we select to talk with. And if there is any, any possibility at all of trying to reach people who do not currently patronize the library, that's the one piece I feel we really didn't pursue as much as I would like to see as someone who's done a little bit of research before. But I'm not sure how that would be feasible in this day and age, but we should talk about it and think about it.
Yeah, no, that's, those are all good points. And as I said, you know, we should probably meet sometime in the beginning of the new year to come up with an overall timeline and plan. And go from there. I think we did as.
Go ahead.
No, I think as Lisa said, I know, I reached out to people when I was in exercise classes and people went to Rotary meetings, Dave did. So I think we did try and do that. But again, it's always a challenge to get people that don't use the library so we can reach out to them to make sure we're serving everybody because that's the whole intent. You know, the library is probably the only commission, the only service in town that's truly for all residents. It's not focused on any one demographic or age or culture. And I think that makes it unique. But we will come up with that in the beginning of the year to see how we can pull things together and begin talking about it. And I'll go back and look at my information definitely. And I'll reach out to Dave to see what he has. Dave Blumey, who is chair of it. The only other thing I wanted to say to all of you, one of the things I will miss most this year is getting all together for a social dinner at my home. So I will do it again. We'll have a holiday in May where if we're still quarantined, at least we can do it outside. I just am very sad that we haven't, won't have the opportunity to get to know each other as individuals rather than just fellow board members. But I will miss that very much. And I just really wish all of you a very, very happy holiday, although it's certainly different from everything we've had in the past. With that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Lisa, for your director's report.
I think Amber has a question.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm not seeing everybody. I don't know why.
That's okay. I just wanted to jump onto your comment when you mentioned that, Mary Ann, about getting to be together again and meet people. And one of the library sessions that I sat in on, I think it had to do with like the duties of being on library board. But one of the comments they made was getting to know the staff of the library better. And I know it's hard because we're doing everything by Zoom now, but especially when we start meeting in person again, I think it would be great if we had a different staff member from the library come and like talk to us about the things that they work on just so we would personally have a chance. Because I feel like it's hard for me even now to feel connected to the people that work at the library and to meet them. And I'd like to see more chance for that to happen again this coming year, especially for people that were new to the library board and, you know, kind of want to get to know people better.
No, that's a great idea, Amber. It really is. And actually, in saying that, the Friends typically, what Greg had referred to, every holiday season in December, they gave a staff appreciation, the Friends gave a staff appreciation lunch. And it gave people a chance to sit down and, you know, talk with someone on the staff and just really share the appreciation. So that's probably something we could do again in the spring.
Right. And also if they joined our meetings and talked about things that they were working on, like shared some of the things they were doing or projects that they had worked on. If, I don't know, it would just be another way to get a little more insight into what they're doing. I had the pleasure of working with Stephanie Prado quite a bit this fall because she's part of the Simsbury Celebrates Committee that I sit on. And it's just being able to work on something small like that just helps you get to know someone so much better and it builds a connection. And then you think of that person again.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's a person versus a job holder.
We can rotate through the department heads and have them attend a meeting in rotation if you would like.
I think that'd be a good idea. I know in the past, they've certainly come in.
Yes.
Especially when they've been new. But it would be good for the new members on the board to have that exposure to them and to be able to ask questions.
Would you like to start that in February?
Sure, that would be great.
Who could not, who could not see everybody?
I can't, I can't see everybody. I don't know why.
In the upper right-hand corner, there may be something called View. And you can pick Gallery View or Talker View.
Oh, okay. Now I've got it.
Good.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, Lisa, is there anyone else that wants a question? I'm sorry. Anyone else have a question? All right, Lisa.
So the director's report, a lot of it, or the bulk of it is obviously about programming and how it supports the strategic plan. But some of the things that I wanted to highlight, unfortunately, after months' consideration, the selected candidate for teen services librarian declined the offer. So we plan to open recruitment again after the new year. Our open hours were extended to 3:30 on Saturdays, beginning December 5th. And the PEGPISA grant purchase deadline has been extended for all grantees to August 2nd, which will be very helpful because our audiovisual equipment is still out there in a void. We're waiting for it to arrive. So the PCs at the circulation desk, as well as the circulation department staff, were all replaced. That department had still been using PCs from the 2008 renovation. So they're very happy and their PCs are moving much more quickly now. Sarah Durkin joined the children's department as a part-time reference librarian. And you may recall, if you've been on the board for a while, that position's been vacant for over a year, almost two years. So we're very happy to have Sarah on board. We've been collaborating with social services to support their holiday gifts and the food pantry. And then Stephanie Prado, who's head of children's services, she planned and facilitated a webinar for the American Library Association, Association for Library Services to Children, Building Literacy Making Connections, which 96 people across the nation attended. And then head of borrowing and technical services, Rachel Gravell served on a panel for the Connecticut Library Association's Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Workshop on December 8. We also had a handful of library staff attend that event as well. So anyone have any questions?
Do you know why the teen librarian declined the position?
Wasn't the right move for her at this juncture?
That's really disappointing.
It's very disappointing, yes. But I'm looking at it as an opportunity. I mean, it took, it took multiple recruitments to find Sherm and Sherm is outstanding. So.
Any other questions of Lisa?
The new video service, Lisa, I was, I can't think of the name of it. But that, that jumps threefold, I think.
Canopy?
Is it still zooming up or?
It is. It is. Yes. We've gotten many requests to offer that service over the years. So we were happy we could finally do that.
And what does that canopy do?
It's video streaming.
Any other questions on Lisa's report? Okay, the next thing that Lisa sent out was the budget. And I don't think we could be more on target. I think our, we should be at 41.67% and we're at 41.52% within budget. So can't get much better than that. But does anyone have any questions about it or anything you want to point out, Lisa?
I don't have anything that jumps out this month, no.
Okay. Then the next thing I had asked Lisa to do is just give us a brief overview of the timeline for the upcoming budget. See. Aware of, you know, what we're being at. The next time we meet, which is the first Monday in January, we'll, we will be approving the submitted that we make to the town for our budget. So I just asked Lisa to let us know what the next steps are after that.
The next steps after that, I will be meeting with the finance director, the town manager, and the deputy town manager about our budget submission and priorities within that budget submission, as well as our service improvement request. And then the town manager will submit her budget to the Board of Selectmen following that. And then there'll be the budget workshop, which happens on March 6th, which is a Saturday. And then the Board of Selectmen are set to adopt the budget on March 8th. And that's, those are the dates that I have to date. I don't have dates for the public hearings.
That's great.
Lisa, have you heard anything from the town in terms of how they're doing financially and what they're looking, because I know obviously towns, well, many towns have been hurt. I work for another town hall and I know going to budget season can be very precarious and filled with worry and whatnot.
The Board of Finance Budget Guideline is an increase of 1.5% overall.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Are there any large capital expenditures that we're planning on, including as part of our budget? Like, is the budget anticipated to just be a more normal operating budget? Or are there additional projects that we have in there that we want to?
We submitted a capital request last year for this coming year because when you plan capital, you plan out five to six years. So there was a request for $35,000 to do an architectural study of the Business and Career Center to make it a co-working space. I'm wondering if maybe we should put that off a year since we've made it into a semi-co-working space now. And yet with the pandemic, we don't have much use of it. There was another capital request put in last year for this coming fiscal year to replace all of the PCs and technology in the adult services and reference department, as well as the tech lab. But since we upgraded all of those machines this year to be Windows 10 compatible, they're moving along much more quickly. So I'm wondering if we should push that off a year as well. But that will be a conversation to have with the town manager. Also too, the town undertook a facilities master plan. They had, they worked with a consultant last year. So there are many library capital expenses in that master plan that will shake out in priority across the whole town. So.
Again, the library is a public building, so we are part of that.
Right.
And the whole scope, and it's up to the town to maintain the ability, et cetera. Does anyone have any other questions on the upcoming budget?
I can just make a comment. If you're interested in the, in the state of the town, budget-wise.
Yep.
Listen to some of the Board of Finance meetings that are going on right now. It's, it's a bit scary to me. Especially, especially on the capital side.
Good to know. Or the minutes are also online also.
Yeah. But one thing, the minutes don't reflect the tone of the people that are there and talking.
Okay.
And that is significant.
Pro-expanding or constraining?
There's a lot of capital between the school system and, and what may happen for the facilities master plan here. And to the point where I think if everything was done according to what was hoped to be done, the debt ratio would go from 7% up to 17%. And that's, that's not going to happen.
No, that won't happen.
No, it's going to have to be managed. So things are going to have to spread out and get prioritized.
Right. Okay, the last item on our agenda is the approval of the 2021 calendar for our regular meetings. Did you all get the email that I sent?
Yes.
Yes.
It, all of them are the third Monday of the month, except for January and February because the third Mondays falls on holidays. So the January 4th meeting was already approved last year. We do that because if we wait until December, we, it's not within 30 days for a regular meeting, which is why we have January 3rd at the bottom. Are there any questions or comments?
No, I didn't see that one, Mary Ann. When did you send that?
I sent it.
For a week ago.
It was Thursday, December 17.
Okay, I'll look for that. What is the February deadline date? I'm sorry, I didn't get.
February 1st.
When February what?
First.
Thank you.
If there aren't any questions or comments, do I have a motion to accept the calendar for the regular meeting dates for 2021 as it stands?
Don't move.
Second.
Kathleen?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Well, that's basically what I have tonight. And I just really wish all of you a very, very, very happy holiday. And hopefully we'll be able to get together next year more in person. But otherwise, at the beginning of the year, we'll start as far as maybe having smaller groups or whatever, working, as Lauren said, getting the plan and the questions pulled through. But you just all have a wonderful holiday and I hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Merry holidays and a new year.
Yes, happy.
Thanks for all your work.